Okay, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to this special session on environmental economic accounting. So this session is going to be a little bit different. We are going to have a panel approach. And that, but we will hear from two speakers first. And then to launch the discussion, our third speaker will come in and then we'll open it for general discussions. So I'm very happy to introduce our speakers today. The first person speaking will be Carl Obst. He's the director of the Institute for the Development of Environmental Economic Accounting. Idea. Professor Erwin Devert from the University of British Columbia, University of New South Wales, and now also associated with ESCO. And Dr. Paul Schreier, who is the former director and chief statisticians of the OECD Statistics and Data Directorate and now associated with ESCO. And so to get us going, we will start with Carl, who will try to stay to about within about 20 minutes and so. Thank you so much.
Thank you much. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much to Kevin and others for organized event and the invitation to speak here. I'm hoping to do this paper justice. The lead author is Eli Fenshale, who some of you may know. He's at Yale. He and I have been working on issues around natural capital and environmental accounting for the last seven or eight years together. And so this, the paper, which is currently under review, which I'll present the key parts of here, was written by Eli. I have to say that. It's not to cast blame away from myself, but rather to say that there's a level of maths and economics in here, which is one I struggle with a little bit. So I'm bringing my national accounting into this discussion and topic. And hopefully, there's some lessons in here for what national accountants might be able to do in this space that I can draw out at the end. But nonetheless, there's some conceptual work in here. And hopefully, the paper will be published and then you'll get more of the details and some of the theory that's underpinning this. So what was the motivation for the paper? And it's partly come to this broader question of how do we think better about wealth and changes in living standards and our relationship to the environment. It's sort of all putting that together. That has been a longstanding discussion in the literature, in the economics literature and elsewhere. And one of the key measures that sort of comes out from the economics literature is about looking at changes in wealth as being a measure of sustainability. So we're trying to think that if that's our target, one of our things that we might think of trying to measure. When you get into a discussion with people who are from a more national accounts background and you talk to a larger number of people in the environmental economics community who are dealing. So we're sort of partly talking in a non-market valuation space. You start to realize, you start sometimes talking at cross purposes. And so that's the discussion essentially that Eli and I have been having with others in this, the system of environmental economic accounting space over the course of the last. Well, I've been trying to look at this for the last 10 or 12 years and not making a lot of progress. Well, hopefully, some progress here. But yeah, so we want to try and tackle these things. So we identified three key questions that we were trying to tackle here and which have been raised in the discussion. One is around the price concept that should be used. One around how do we, if you look at the literature on measuring changes in real wealth, how does that relate to the national accounts? And so how can we make that connection? And there's also an often discussion around sustainability in real wealth about weak and strong sustainability. So how does that come into play when we're thinking about this, getting to this metric of changes in real wealth and the link to sustainability? So first on this issue of welfare and exchange values. Essentially, the national accountants have long said, and you can read the SNA, and it says, "We don't want to include measures of consumer surplus. We're happily trying to stay away from concepts around externalities and measurement of them." Indeed, the accounting community more generally, not just national accountants, is not keen on externalities. And so you end up, there's a debate between what the national accountants do, welfare and exchange and different values. So that would, part of the main aim, one of the aims of the paper is to try and sort of cut through, cut to the chase on that discussion point to see if we can't sort of head it off at the pass. And so one way it's framed is in terms of rectangles and triangles. So both of these are, the welfare values and exchange values are both things which are measured in lots of studies in different ways. We find that there's quite a number of things in which they essentially agree. One is that marginal value is price and price is marginal value. So that there's no disagreement on that. There's a lot of stuff around substitution and complementarity and general equilibrium effects, which both of them take into account to varying degree in different ways and to varying degrees. We don't, neither the welfare valuation measurement literature or national accounts assumes that the market will give you the best or that assumes that the things that you observe or that you measure is first best. So you're dealing in second best worlds. And what we do show in the paper is essentially a change in real exchange value and a change in real welfare value can approximate themselves. But there's a few caveats to that answer. So one of the hopes is that we can sort of try and merge on some language, which has started to gradually develop through the ecosystem accounting community, but more broadly about how we're talking about these concepts. And so we can actually get to the job of measuring these things rather than having an endless debate about whether we're measuring different or the same things. And so the conclusion, sort of cut to one of the key points of the paper at the end, is that the discussion is largely or commonly about what you're actually measuring, not the concepts that you're using to measure any individual thing. So this is a figure which Eli, he was, is a strategy on natural capital accounting, which the US has put together over the course of the last, well, I think it got finished a couple of years ago. And Eli was the key architect of that strategy. And this was one of the figures that he came up with. I'm not going to expect you to read that and I'm not going to go through it. Nonetheless, it's the key point being that you need to make choices about what it is that you measure, whether you're doing welfare valuation or whether you're doing exchange valuation. So just to sort of lock in a few sort of ideas here. The exchange value concept, we've got a fairly standard demand curve here. Nothing too dramatic. Interestingly, and this is what's used in accounting and in national accounts, we talk about an exchange value. An important point here is that in this framing, zero is meaningful. So having a zero value is quite possible. But what you're actually going to measure is the P, P naught times the S naught, the S naught being the quantities. And what you include in here is go through a process of classifications and discussions about the SNA production boundary, for example, and the structures of products which are included and all those types of things. And that gives you the way in which you decide on what's within scope of your exchange value. When it comes from a welfare value point of view, one of the things here is it's even though in this diagram, the, on this figure that you can see the demand curve is intersecting with the Y axis. In concept, the zero is meaningless where welfare theory is really about changes in welfare, not about absolute values. And so the way in which you would get to welfare value is integrating underneath the demand curve. And there's a different ways you can do that. So, and one of them is to measure an equivalent variation and another might be to look at consumer surplus. But the key point here being that the, what's included in that analysis is really up to the individual and I guess the researcher in determining what you think is within scope. What can happen though, and this is where the debate has largely come about, is that when people are sort of trying to compare the exchange value and welfare value, you keep on focusing on this sort of the darker shaded area. So A, C, and F, the bottom three rectangles are the exchange value. You measure the consumer surplus is the triangle. So this is the rectangles and triangles discussion. Welfare values are almost by definition higher because they include that area, H. And so then the, one of the big debates in the ecosystem services valuation literature is, while the, what's been the valuation approach in ecosystem accounting, which uses exchange values to allow to connect to estimates in the national accounts, will necessarily underestimate the value of ecosystem services because it's not including area, area H. So that's been one of the big discussion points. Nonetheless, yeah. So that's sort of the basic starting point. But at the end of the day, what we want to be looking at here in terms of changes in real wealth is looking at changes that happen over time. So in this figure, we've got two price points or two quantity points, I guess, S zero and S one. So from an exchange value point of view, you've got A, C, and F for period zero. And F and G is the area, the two exchanged in period one. And so in nominal terms, so what you record and you observe at two points in time would give you a change in value. But what we do know is that in actual fact, even national accountants don't measure a change in, change in wealth in those nominal terms. They'll be using some sort of an index number approach generally in order to look at the, the change between one to two, to remove the price effects in effect, which has this sort of averaging sort of relationship, oh, I didn't mean result. And so you, you start to look at the, the areas that are between B and E, which are sort of reflecting these sort of real changes. I don't think I've expressed that very well, but hopefully, we're going okay. And so we can look at that, that change in the, in the area in order to get the, the change in, change in real wealth. And that's sort of fairly standard price index theory. And so as long as you're not talking about nominal changes and you're talking about real changes, then everything sort of comes together quite well. Okay, I'm going to keep moving through this. So then we wanted to try and extend that into how we might consider changes in wealth more broadly. So that's sort of, I guess, the relationship between welfare values and exchange values as concepts. But when we start applying that in more general situation, how can we frame this? So imagine we've got an initial starting point, A, which has an indifference curve. You can see flowing through there, V, S zero. But it has an associated level of wealth. Now, one thing which I struggled with as we were putting the paper together, but sort of comes out from the discussion is that that W zero that you can find, which is the wealth associated with point A, is essentially hypothetical. It's not a required number in an economic sort of sense. It's, well, in the sense that you're trying to establish a change in wealth. So you need some normalization to be able to get there. And so one, I think, a useful for me, at least the easiest one for me to understand this, was that W zero is a measure of the opportunities available if all of your stock could be liquidated without any other price effects. So you're imagining the asset that you're holding on to, you could just swap it out. And I guess in a sense, if you think of the value of your house, the value that you would put on it from a, to get a loan or to put it on your balance sheet would be the amount that you could exchange it for, for cash. So that's the sort of notion that we're thinking about, but that, it's not necessarily real, real. But it doesn't really matter. This is the good point. So we imagine then, so we've got situation A, but we're looking at changes in real wealth. And let's suppose that something happens to increase our quantity of the stock. From an environmental point of view, we might get more of the stock because of conservation of the stock. So increasing the area of forests or something along those lines. But there might be a discovery of mineral resources, something which, all else being equal, leads to an increase in the quantity of the stock. So we end up at, at B. And then our challenge is to try and work out how we can look at this change between W zero and W one. And the paper sort of works through the maths of this sort of story. And managed to show that whether you approach this from a welfare value perspective or whether you approach it from an exchange value perspective, you end up at the same result. And I think that's the, I guess, you're joining this, joining these two approaches to valuation together to get these sort of changes in real wealth. And you do get to the point that superlative indexes is a very nice way to go. So another way of framing these three points is to think about the link to consumer surplus and equivalent variation under this framing. So instead of having wealth on the Y axis, we've now got the price of the stock. Quantity of stock is still on the bottom. So we've moved from A to B. But we can then calculate the area of the consumer surplus, which is A plus B. Or we can calculate the equivalent variation. And the point being made here, often the consumer surplus will be a reasonable approximation of it. And so I guess you can start to see that there's connections here from a measurement point of view about what we're trying to target. So what are some of the lessons that might come out or implications that come out from this? One of the challenges when you're in a non-market environmental valuation context, often the valuation is done in a benefit cost or cost benefit type of approach. And so you're looking at external these types of framings. But you can, then, then you're trying to create a counterfactual of some point. So you're trying to create, well, what is it compared to some alternative situation? So how does that then relate potentially to a national accounting situation? So the, the point being that from a national accounting point of view, what you're doing is comparing it at two points in time. We're often in a benefit cost situation. You're comparing an actual, which is your, you might observe something at point B. And you're then trying to compare it back to some alternative situation. But if that alternative situation was simply what happened in the previous period, then you're starting to talk about the same type of analysis. So actually clarifying in measurement, your comparative, your counterfactual becomes really fundamental to measuring this sort of changes in real wealth. The other point is that at the end of the day, and this sort of leads on to some of the recommendations that we've sort of come out of the paper, is that we really want to focus on what the price and quantity pair is at point B. So that's our observed sort of point. Not trying to imagine what the hypothetical is at A or what it might alternatively be along a, on a similar indifference curve at C. So if we can somehow keep our focus on these price quantity pairs and monitor them progressively over time, then we should be able to actually keep doing what we're doing, actually, in what we, as in from a national accounting point of view, what we tend to do normally with the rest of the market economy and look at these price quantity pairs and start measuring changes in real terms for our different goods and services and assets. The challenge in this space though, and I guess this is where the caveats come in, is that most of the time when we're doing these observations, we're not doing them as consistently, these price quantity pairs, we're not doing them consistently for non-market goods and services. And so we end up in a situation of what is the accounting boundary? What is in scope of measurement as being the critical question? It's not the underlying theory per se. It's the way in which we sort of decide what's in scope and how we bring it into scope. So what then become the implications for statisticians? I think it's really helpful to understand the, the idea that this level of wealth is hypothetical. I think that, I still struggle with the idea because it seems real enough. And I'd like to think that my house was worth what it is because otherwise that loan is not going to repay itself. But yeah, the idea that that is a normalization to enable us to actually look at a whole range of different assets and bring them together, as I think, something that is a, is really interesting sort of way of thinking about things that might be. And I think it goes to the point, the point that I take out of the, the work that we've done on this paper is that it's sort of, it's sort of an aspect of economic theory that you don't think about. You sort of accept that this sort of level of wealth must be real. But in actual, the theory is basically telling you, we're just measuring change. We're measuring change in real terms. I know a separate discussion I had with Eli a year or so ago. He said, "The whole theory of sustainability doesn't actually prescribe what level sustainability." So you can have a very sustainable situation, which is incredibly poor. There's nothing about the theory of sustainability in economic terms that says what the level should be that you're trying to sustain. That's a, that's a, it's a separate question, but not, not an unimportant one. But nonetheless, this distinction, I think, is important. Some of these I've already mentioned about the price chronic pairs being fundamental as a distinct from measuring the values, which is an interesting thing from a point of view of collecting data, I think. Then also leaning into superlative indexes, which I think is a very real thing, which has happened over the last 15, 20 years in the statistical world. And then focus a lot about these questions of accounting boundaries as opposed to the concepts themselves. The other interesting ones, this discussion, a lot of the discussion on sustainability has been around weak and strong sustainability. So weak being something where you're able to substitute between all of the assets and strong being something where you, that some things, you shouldn't, you hold your asset base constant. You, you need this sort of particular mix. And there's, there's concepts around critical natural capital, which suggests that there's sort of particular aspects of, of the environment that you need to keep. And so you, you can't or shouldn't substitute. Or if you do substitute them, why, and it must necessarily be less sustainable. The point of the theory here that we're trying to suggest is in actual fact, if you take an approach to real wealth, measured using superlative index number types of approaches, you're accounting for that substitution in an ideal world, an ideal measurement world. You're accounting for that substitution. So the question of whether it's weak or strong is really a little bit irrelevant. You don't need to make an A priority assumption about weak or strong. You can just assess what, what's happening. And I don't, I won't get into the, the last bits here because it's not my strength. Other people know far more about this stuff in this room than I do about being linear in prices and quantities. So I'll move on to the last slide. So sort of key messages out of this whole presentation and the paper is that there's no conceptual barrier to doing non-market valuation. That's one of the theses here, is that you, there are ways of doing it. Environmental economists have been finding alternative approaches to non-market valuation for quite a long time. But we need to work through what in actual fact and get agreement on exactly what it is that we're measuring. In the world of the market, we do have this sort of classifications of products, which allows to get some sort of reasonably clear notion of what it is that we're collecting prices for and collecting quantities for. And yeah, that's really not very evident on the non-market side, particularly in environment and ecosystem services. Which then leads us to the question, if we can, we know how to do it conceptually, the measurement job, and we can come up with the things that we agree on what we're going to value, then we need some more rigorous and widespread approach to doing it. Because at the moment, it's essentially, little research is happening in different piece of paper. There's plenty of published literature on it. It's almost impossible to compare. And it doesn't cover everything that you want to do. It doesn't cover a whole area or a whole bundle of ecosystem services. So in a sense, it's a, it's a benefit transfer problem. Can we measure things in one location and use it somewhere else? But then we need to know what characteristics are the same and what are different. But I think the biggest question here for statistical agencies is, is the second last point about how we can come up with a more structured approach to collecting information, assuming that we can get our classifications and coverage right. Then can you have a reasonable program of work to collect these price quantity pairs for different ecosystem services and hence to get to these broader measures of natural wealth? And I guess our thesis at the end of the day is that these change in wealth measures that we think, or change in real wealth measures that we think are fundamental to improving the discussion around sustainability are ones that are really meritorious. They're really worth doing. They may not be perfect, but they, it is a really good way to go. And there is a sort of practical line of sight, subject to resources, about sort of heading in this direction. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Carl. And while we change the slides, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know that we hold questions to the end. And so we are coming back to, to a little panel and Q and A at the end. So please write your questions down and make sure you remember them. And. Okay, so the next speaker is Erwin Devert.
Thank you. Yes. It's mission impossible here to go through all this algebra. So it's a question of what I leave out. Sorry about all this, anyway. Yeah, so the paper focuses quite a bit on environmental accounting. But the particular focus is on the treatment of insurance in the context of environmental accounting. Insurance is a very difficult product to deal with, both in the consumer price index and in the production accounts. Well, we need a framework to discuss these problems. And so what I've used over the years is kind of a Hixian framework to the measurement of income and wealth. And so in section two, I'll, I'll look at that. And then section three looks at various definitions of income, output, input, and wealth, following along in the work that Kevin and I have done recently. And this, this directly ties in with what Carl Obst was talking about. And then section four talks about user costs. And it turns out that they play a role in insurance. But four, five, I won't be able to get through too much of it. But I think the discussion about different income concepts is probably more relevant at this stage. Yeah, so the measurement framework is from the viewpoint of the production accounts rather than the consumer accounts, which Carl talked about. And so we, we start off with a definition of profits in nominal terms. And there's an output price vector, PY. Quantity vector corresponds, YT. Intermediate inputs, PX and X. Labor inputs, PL and L. And purchased investment from other sectors. So that's the PIIT. And then comes the controversial part. Yes, we value the beginning of the period capital stock as an input into the production period. So that's the PKT dot KT. And that's a deduction because we're paying for it. We think of the firm as starting up. A good example is East India Company setting up a voyage. And so at the beginning of the period, you, you buy your ship and you stock it with inventory. You sail it off into the Indies, sell stuff, buy stuff back, sail back. And at the end of the voyage, you, you sell off the boat again and count up your profits. So why is there a one plus R in front of the initial, beginning of the period capital stock? Well, you're tying up somebody's capital when they're investing in that ship. And so you not only have to pay back the original amount of the loan to buy the ship, you have to pay interest that accumulates opportunity cost of capital over the length of the voyage. So that's the basic accounting framework. And away we go. So a couple of quotes here from Edwards and Bell. They had this accounting framework, as did Hicks. I'll skip that. It's just, talks about the same thing that I'm talking about, except for the interest rate adjustment. That wasn't quite made explicit. But it's implicit in the accounting approach because you have to earn the opportunity cost of capital on your initial capital stock. Yeah, and this is actually a specialization of Hicks' intertemporal production model that he had in 1939, where the length of the horizon is just one period. Now, you can implement this framework at the national level and have an example back in 2014, Devert-Fox, 2018, and more recently in Devert, Nomura, and Shimizu. And more details on the accounting framework with Fox, a recent article that just came out. Yeah, okay. So back to the definition of profits. And the terms on the right hand side of one, the first, the output, the intermediate input, the labor, the purchase investment, those are market transactions. In principle, we can observe them. But what about the beginning of the period capital stock? Well, that's going to be made up of past investments. And how do you depreciate them? How do you value them? That's going to involve imputations. And the same with the opportunity cost of capital. We won't know exactly what that is in most situations. And then similarly with the end of period capital stock, we're going to have to impute that. So basically, this is a fundamental problem of accounting. You buy a durable asset. How do you depreciate it over time? How do you account for it? It's, it's input over multiple periods. So environmental assets, land and natural resources, you know, can be treated in this, this framework. So that's, that's the basic point. Don't make a distinction between produced and non-produced assets. But the natural resource stocks are a little bit complicated because we can observe. because we can observe Australian shipments of iron ore to China. And there's a price and quantity associated with that. Mining companies also make estimates of their reserves underground. But then we have to convert those reserves into equivalent units of iron ore that ship to China. Maybe we don't have to do that. Anyway, we need a consistent way of valuing those reserves in price and quantity terms, which is not trivial. But basically, the same accounting framework works. So here we get into DeWitt Fox's definition of income and output. So what would be input in this framework? Well, labor payments. And then the interest that the initial stock of capital earns. That's the R PK KT. And then pure profits. So if you use the definition of pure profits, equation one back there, some slides substituted into two. Then you get the counterpart to the income side of the production accounts to the output side of the production accounts. So you can measure the value of input and output. They're equal if everything balances, the profits act as a balancing item. And so now you have this output definition. It's value of output minus value of intermediates, minus purchased investment goods. And then the value of the difference in the capital stock. And so this is where problems occur. Because this difference includes holding gains and holding losses. And national accountants try to avoid this for good reason. Because we could have a bubble and the end of period capital stock could soar up to enormous heights. And there's no way we can really convert all the Bitcoin value into real consumption at a constant price. So you know, there's some problems with this definition, but it does reflect increasing costs of land, which is one of my pet topics that we don't account for in most of our models. And so increases in the value of land would show up in the income accounts in this framework. Okay. Yeah, the unsustainability problem when there's an asset bubble. But I think there's room for more than one income concept. So that's my feeling about this. Now, a paper that people don't mention in this context is this paper by Samuelson in 1961. He discussed different income concepts. And it's very useful to look at some of his ways. So I think I've hit the 10 minute mark, right? Oh, I've got a minute to spare. Yeah, so I'm going to look at three of his definitions. Well, the first general definition is the Marshall Haag definition. Current power to consume if he wishes to, value of consumption plus value of assets that you could convert into consumption at the constant prices that Carl was talking about. So now, how do you implement this into real terms? And so he has three different suggested methods. The first method is the method that Carl suggested. You just deflate your value of output, the nominal value of output that we talked about before, by the end of period price of consumption. So you could potentially convert whatever income you had into units of consumption. So that's the simplest method. And then method two is the index number method, which Carl also talked about. And Samuelson talked about this too and had nice diagrams about what this means. And that's very, very useful. So what's the overall price vector for this aggregate? Well, there'd be the price of output, the price of intermediates, the price of purchased investment, the end of period capital stock price, beginning of the period capital stock price. Corresponding quantities are the QY that matches up with outputs. The QX that matches up with intermediate inputs, QI, purchased investment. And then the quantities of the beginning of the period capital stock, quantities at the end of period capital stocks. So outputs have a plus sign, inputs a negative sign. So that's pretty straightforward. And, you know, you could choose either method one or method two. Now, what else? Well, Hixian income. Samuelson had an interesting interpretation of it. You think of a production possibility set between consumption and investment, or change in the capital stock. You know, the usual production possibility set that we draw. And so we're on a tangent somewhere there. And the conversion method would just extract, you know, extrapolate out the consumption access. And then that would give you your consumption equivalent. And so what Samuelson interpreted Hixian income as, not that extrapolated point, but the point where the actual production possibility set intersected the consumption axis. But he sort of dismissed it by saying, well, this is hypothetical. And statisticians would have a tough time figuring this out. And this gets us into the various sustainability measures that are out there, like with Weitzman. You make all these assumptions about the future and you try to work out what the sustainable consumption is. But you know, a lot of assumptions to do that. Whereas methods one and two are very cut and dried. So, yeah. Yeah. So you could do this methods one and two for wealth. You see, we were doing everything combined, but now you could do it separately for wealth. And so nothing much more. I also suggest Fisher index as being suitable there. Yeah. So actually, the choice between methods one and two has a long history in economics. Pigu and Hayek argued about this in the 1940s. So Pigu favored the maintenance of physical capital. So that would be method two, the index number method. And Hayek favored the maintenance of financial capital. You value your capital stock, the end of period prices and divide by the price of consumption. And that's you try to maintain that over time. Now, it's interesting that Hayek's method was discussed in the accounting literature in the 1970s. 1970s was another period of high inflation, right? And so accountants actually got interested in trying to deal with the effects of inflation. And so there was this accountant Sterling, who was at the University of Alberta, of all places, who suggested the Hayek method. Anyway, so there is a connection with accounting theory, the stuff that I'm talking about. But it's, nobody really picked it up, so. Yes. Well, then we get to green accounting. And so I have this quote here in the 2003 CEA manual, which wasn't published, but seems to be out there. And the concepts of weak sustainability and strong sustainability. So it's like Carl said, the strong sustainability, you don't, you try to maintain your past period capital stock, component by component. Well, this is fairly unrealistic because new assets come in, old assets go out. So then Carl indicated the way forward there. You don't try to do this for all assets, you just try to do it for critical assets. So that's the strong. And then the weak is, you know, method two. Basically, you just try to maintain an index of wealth. So we can talk about that. Yeah, and then in this section, I introduce the geometric model of depreciation and user costs. Turns out that they're very useful in the insurance concept, context. Don't have time to go through this in a lot of ways. So let's look at the last line on this slide. So what's the end of period value of the beginning of the period capital stock? Well, two things have happened from the beginning of the period to the end of the period. Number one is depreciation. So that's the one minus delta. The other thing that's happened is, well, there could be revaluation. The price of the asset has gone up. So that's the one plus I term. So then when you look at user costs, there's the cost of purchasing the asset, which you multiply one plus R to get the interest rate component. And then minus the end of period value. And that gives you your user cost value, and then you extract the user cost price out of that. So there are all those user costs. And then you can get decompositions of profit into user cost components and so on. So Jorgensen and his coworkers have worked this model. It's very useful, user costs, treatment of inventories, treatment of money, other financial resources, and also natural resources. Yes. Now we get to insurance. Okay, suppose there's an environment sector that inflicts property damage on capital N properties during accounting period. So the initial capital stock or natural resource stock or whatever. Well, think of either houses or automobiles, but mostly houses. Because environmental damage is destroying a lot of houses. And so it's an increasing problem. Okay, so you've got capital N holders of this asset. And over the period, there's some environmental damage. And that's capital DNT for property N. Mostly zero, but then some properties are damaged maybe completely. Okay, so there's a property damage rate. Divide the D by the initial capital stock. That gives you the delta ends, or we had a delta already for the depreciation rate. So this is triangle delta. This is the environmental delta that destroys capital. So then you look at the total amount of damage. And that's equation 13. And total beginning of the capital stock. And then you can form an average damage rate. And the average damage rate is just defined by 15. And it's a weighted average of the individual damage rates. Okay, so now what's the end of period capital stock for owner N? Well, there would be regular wear and tear depreciation. Right hand side of 16, one minus delta T, assume the same depreciation rate for all these assets. Times the initial capital stock, and then you subtract the damage. But the damage N is equal to delta N, triangle delta N times initial capital stock. So you get that. Now, equation 16 implicitly assume the damage occurs at the end of the period. If it occurred throughout the period, you could kind of accumulate the damage. And then the end of period capital stock would be given by 17. One minus triangle delta times K. That's the amount of capital stock that isn't damaged. And then you have to depreciate that by the one minus delta. So this is my preferred expression for end of period capital stock. Yes, so now we can calculate the aggregate end of period capital stock. And it, one minute, huh, look at that. Yeah, so basically what happens is instead of just a single depreciation rate, one minus delta T, you multiply that by one minus triangle T and gives you overall depreciation. So one way you could view all this discussion is this is much ado but nothing. All national income accountants have to do is include environmental damage into their estimates of wear and tear depreciation. But I think it's useful to separately recognize environmental damage. Because then when you have a more complete set of accounts, you know, you look at the different production units that are producing pollutants. And then you have a model of greenhouse gases and then the damage they cause. You kind of want that detail. Yeah, well, one minute. Can't really do much. A simple model of a costless insurance company. What it does is basically, you can look at the end of period capital stocks that you get without insurance and then with insurance. Instead of the individual damage rates, triangle delta N, you're paying a premium rate that averages over these things. And so that's, that's, but in the end, the damage is there. So in the aggregate, nothing, nothing happens. But the individual distribution of damage now changes. You're sharing risks with insurance. And this is what causes problems in the end. Because when I work through all this algebra, we end up with insurance just being a drag on the system. You know, if you can't produce insurance costlessly, there's a cost to it. So it just increases the user costs of holding the asset over the period. And so it just looks like dead weight loss for the insurance company. Well, this is where we get into utility benefit of sharing the risk. But then you get into models of risk. And you can't get national income accounts to look at these models. They're too complicated, right? Have you ever looked at one, Carl? No. Anyway, so I have a paper in 1995 where I kind of review the literature at that time and come up with a somewhat usable econometric model. But you know, you need econometrics then. And the design of the accounts changes because now you have this separate little sector that's eating up resources. And it's counterbalanced by this utility benefit of insurance. And it's difficult to measure and it's difficult to set up in the system of accounts. So that's kind of a brief overview of what happens with insurance. Oh, here's something funny. Where's Walras? Yes. 1874, Walras worked out a user cost formula with insurance. And there it is. Somewhere, yeah, right there. So there's a regular depreciation and the damage depreciation. And the interest cost is tied up, so quite interesting. Green accounting adds the value of the change in capital stocks to nominal income. I like this reasonable thing to do. Yeah, imputations, okay. So you know, we're not going to do without regular GDP because it has less imputations than this stuff I've been talking about. Fine, but we can have more than one measure of output. Yeah, and so the problem of fitting the utility gains due to insurance into a system of national accounts. Simple framework above could be integrated into the SNA. But it doesn't capture the utility benefits of insurance. That's a separate accounting problem which remains to be solved. Yeah, no, in my theoretical models, I didn't distinguish between homeowners or people in the household sector or businesses wanting insurance because they both insure structures. But when you get into these uncertainty models, you talk about the preferences of the owner towards risk. You have contingent commodities in there. Now, a firm is owned by many people typically. How do you aggregate their preferences? How do you estimate it? Just a lot of very difficult problems. So yes, fitting insurance into the system of national accounts is important, but difficult to do. That'll end.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, do you have slides, right? No? Okay, so our next speaker is a discussant of the previous two papers. But at the same time, he is going to set us off into a more broader discussion that will include all of you, hopefully. So thank you, Paul.
Yeah, so I took I took my role as discussant seriously in the sense that I will actually discuss your presentation. in the sense that I will actually discuss your presentations, yeah. Rather than things that be beyond that. So I'll start with Carl's presentation. I should add that I had the privilege of also getting the paper that actually underlies the presentation. And I should say, there's a lot more in this paper than Carl was able to present in the short time. So for me, that was very, very useful. And when I, when I looked at that paper, it was a situation whereby I started reading it and sort of ticking off things and said, yes, yes, absolutely. I relate to that. I can see it makes a lot of sense. And then at one point, I had a... There was a step that I couldn't quite follow. And then the end was again, you know, all made a lot of sense. And I agree with their conclusions. So let me be a little more specific what I mean here. So the first part where I ticked off everything was really when I... Well, first of all, this discussion between exchange values and welfare valuation is indeed something that has been present a long time. And as Carl explained, is something that is really central to also the debate about environmental accounting and national accounting. So the paper says that in order to track sustainability one way or another, you really need to look at changes in wealth. And you know, non-negative evolution of wealth is a necessary condition for sustainability. Absolutely. To value and aggregate these changes, use average prices between periods. Absolutely, I agree. Prices for the... The relevant prices for the welfare valuation shadow prices really, or accounting prices, as the theory showed. And they are defined as the marginal change of discounted intertemporal utility with regard to a particular asset. So basically, what happens in this literature about green accounting in the theoretical literature is you build an intertemporal welfare function. Okay, that basically discounts future utility. Typically, consumption can be a bit broader. And you look at the present value of this or at the current value of it. And then the marginal change of this value with respect to one particular asset, that is the price, the shadow price that you want to attach to the change of the asset. And then you get an indication of whether or not this is that sustainable. And so in a way, but you have to realize that in order to construct this, of course, you really have to make a lot of assumptions and a whole of, a whole set of modeling about these future developments. So it involves hypotheses about discount rates, about future preferences, about what is called also in the paper, an economic program, which in theory comprises all sorts of institutions and second best solutions. And a whole world really that you have to project in order to make these shadow prices real and to bring them in. Yes, all sorts of things. So I read somewhere that accounting prices are defined in... Oh, that's a quote from Desgoutte, actually. Where he said, accounting prices are defined in terms of hypothetical perturbations to an economic forecast. Okay, so this is, that's really... And whereas, of course, exchange values are somewhat things that in principle, at least, we're able to observe as, you know, realized observations from some transactions on capital markets. I mean, that's very imperfect, of course, as well. Not everything is transacted. But at least in theory, you can, you know, go out and see what is happening. And then, you know, you can see how these things compare now. And in a way, I, and I agree with all this. And this is reflected in the paper. The point where I sort of had a hard time going forward was to understand how we go from this situation or from this difference between the exchange value and the welfare value to the discussion between triangles and rectangles. Okay, and because for me, the real, I mean, the conceptual issue has always been this. How do we deal with this complexity of the accounting prices, which involves this intertemporal considerations? I mean, how can we conceivably deal with this? And that, for me, has always been this issue of discussion between the exchange values and the accounting values. And then sort of going from there to the discussion of what happens under the demand curve when you phrase or look at this in terms of consumer surplus versus, versus, you know, the normal national accounts treatment. That is something that I, you know, I haven't really captured yet. And then everything else is fine again. Because, you know, I think it's excellent idea. I have absolutely nothing, nothing to add to that. But it's not quite clear whether, you know, you can really place those two prices on one demand function also. What a demand function, I mean, that's, there's something behind this, some sort of expenditure function, consumer maximization. And how does this square with the accounting prices that fall out of a completely different, different framework? But you know, that's maybe just an issue of how this is being communicated in the paper and how one gets there. So as I said, I have no issue with the discussion of consumer surplus and triangles under the demand curve. I also really like this conclusion or the intuition that it's changes in assets that are needed in order to bring those two things together. And so I really found the paper very stimulating. And it made me think a lot about this debate. And I really look forward to, you know, getting my head around this, this transition from the, from the general model to what happens under the demand curve. Erwin. And environmental accounting and property insurance. So Erwin very nicely presented the general accounting framework that he uses for the purpose at hand. It's this net production framework à la Higgs with this idea that capital is something that you buy in as an input and you sell as an output. And all the things that are happening in the accounting period sort of fall out and lead to a somewhat different notion of income also and production, which I think essentially really comes down to adding this real holding gains or holding gains to our traditional income, income measure. And I like the various references to the literature and the accounting concepts. So I think that's, that's always very good to be reminded that these discussions are not something that we have really come up with. But they've been with us for a while. The... So, and I have no... Again, I actually like this idea of bringing holding gains into our income concepts. Because yeah, it is useful in the, in a broader, in a broader context. And yesterday, I mean, that was one of the extensions that I also brought into the notion of measuring income and thinking about next period's consumption and keeping real wealth intact. And I think this is exactly that, that idea that is coming, that is coming through. Absolutely. There are some quibbles that I have when you move from the income side to the production side. Okay, and so to me, you can extend the concept of income for analytical reasons. But the issue with holding gains that the national accounts, national accountants have is, well, there's this issue of bubbles that you mentioned. But I think the fundamental uneasiness is with the idea that holding gains or price changes constitute an act of production. And you have to buy into that if you want your holding gains as part of production. So I think, you know, you need this, the story behind why something that is, you know, changes value. I mean, what is the, what is the act of production that is there? But anyway, that's a slightly... Well, you can have income, you know, if you get a transfer from somewhere, that is income, it's not production. And so anyway, this is a, it's a, that's a slightly different, different discussion. Because I'm very much comfortable with the adjustment to the, to the income, to the income side. The damage, environmental damage, I think that is, is an excellent idea. And as you said, in principle, it's something that is quite intuitive. Because you think, okay, you have these environmental damages. And in a way, they only extend your notion of depreciation or depletion if you want. I guess one would have to make a little bit of a distinction between sort of what is expected there. Or, you know, looking at trends to see that's what we want to come in to comply with the idea that things that are complete shocks, at least at the macro level, you know, they belong to the balance sheet and not necessarily. But this is, I mean, that's more a question of how it's being, how it's being implemented. And the user cost. And so already, the extended depreciation is of course something that shows up in the user cost as we saw. I also, I'm quite comfortable with the idea that you would bring in the insurance costs into the user cost. I mean, this is like taxes are also in the, in the user costs. And yes, there is a problem in the end that you only show a rising cost and nothing happens on the quantity side. But yeah, as you say, it's hard to model the benefits from, from insurance. But I think that is, shouldn't prevent us from thinking about adjusting the user costs to reflect these costs that are real to the, to the private sector and to others. And on that, I will...
Thank you very much.
We can move to the panel, I think.
Please join me to thank everyone. Can you, we are now going to move to the panel and make sure everyone has got their, one of the microphones. Do we have one microphone missing?
I think, I think...
Oh, everyone has got one, perfect. Okay, okay. So what I, I thank you so much, everyone. And the first thing I'd like to do is although Erwin has already been responding behind the scenes, is to give Carl and first an opportunity to say, you know, anything you want to sort of respond to Paul. And then we move on from there and then to Erwin. And then we move to Q and A.
Great, thanks, Alicia. Thank you, Paul, for the comments. I was lucky in a sense that Paul caught me yesterday and asked his question. So I had 24 hours to think about the answer. And actually, the answer is in the paper, which is good. But it goes to, but it may be a question on the assumption. So of what we've taken in the paper. But essentially, we're... And actually, I think it goes to this concept of our interpretation of the word exchange value. Because I think what we have tended to do, generally speaking, not just in the national accounts community, is treat that as a proxy for market. And the intention in the paper is to treat exchange value as a value concept independent of how you might actually go about measuring it. So in effect, the, I've got the, I found the paragraph. "We assume that the scope of measurement used for exchange values" in the paper "is sufficiently inclusive to approximate what consumers would choose to value." So it's in actual fact, a broader notion. In that sense, I don't think it deals with necessarily all of the issues. That the assumption that's written down here doesn't deal with all of the issues you raised about accounting prices. But to the extent that, but it turns the question of the scope, the difference that you noted between the accounting prices and exchange such observed market prices, exchanges for assets, into a question of what is, what is being valued and what's in the scope of value. So to the extent that you could say that the broader, there was a broader scope of value of things being considered in an, in an accounting price, the assumption here is you could get an exchange value for that, for that broader scope. That's essentially the framing that we're sort of positing. And I guess it's, I mean, another way to frame it that I was sort of thinking of as I was sitting there was if you take an NPV approach to the valuation, you, we accept that that, an NPV would give you an exchange value. And in theory, at least, that should be taken into account into temporal issues. So in that sense, you know, the question in a sense then becomes a scope of what you have in your set of expectations about moving forward. And if you fully accounted for all of the different externalities and everything in terms of your net present value calculation, you would still end up with an exchange value. But it would notionally reflect an accounting price in the wealth accounting literature. And I sort of think in practice, what happens in wealth accounting is that everyone's using exchange values anyway. So that what they do for, in wealth accounting is say, well, what's the value of the produced capital? Well, we'll just take the number from the national accounts, they'll be fine. Which might be fine for some types of assets. But it's probably not that great for infrastructure. So if you say, what's the, what's the value of a hospital, for example? The national accounts say it's the cost of building the hospital. But you know, a true accounting price would say, well, we have to think about all of the, you know, the benefit streams and all these other types of things, positive externalities and other things that might come from that. So and there's no reason you couldn't work that out. And I guess the paper is just suggesting, once you worked all that out, you would come up with an exchange value. Or you could, or you could also measure a welfare change. So that's...
So I guess for those things to happen, you just need a whole set of assumptions somewhere. And I think they go somewhat beyond the fact that you have the same scope of assets. I mean, you will, I think there is something about perfect information or, you know, functioning markets and foresight that you, you need to get to that point. And I think that would be, would be good if this could be, you know, elaborate a little bit so that one can follow that transition.
Thank you. Erwin.
Yes, I have no response to Mr. Schreier here. We pretty much see eye to eye on most things. But I'm worried about you, Carl. I mean, these hypothetical things, I mean, they are really hypothetical. Do you think they're ever going to go anywhere?
Which, which particular hypotheticals are you talking about?
You know, you have to make all these assumptions and...
I think, I think the general point is that if you're trying to then... So the, so part of it is to, the purpose of paper was to take us forward on the theoretical side at least, to say that this is how, at least for the people who are the practitioners, the environmental economics people and the, and the Cia community, as it were, then in actual fact, the theories out there that you've known and others have known for, you know, a long, long time. But actually, putting it to practice can be a little bit, it can seem very challenging and difficult. But the suggestion in the paper is in actual, at least on some of these non-market ecosystem services, there are ways forward. And so that we can then, if we think about, if we thought about a more structured approach to collecting non-market information on ecosystem services of different types and we're clear about how we were classifying them and what their scope was, then we might be in a much better position to make a sort of a richer understanding of these changes in real wealth than we are at the moment by just looking at the market based type of things.
Thank you. So I'm going to open up now for questions. Who wants to ask the first question? Okay. Just wait for the microphone, thank you.
Thank you very much. So both brilliant presentations and the discussion was really good as well. So this was mostly sort of a question towards Carl. So if your paper is available, by the way, I'd really like to read it afterwards. So I'm from the Office for National Statistics. And we've been doing some work around measurement of inclusive wealth in accounting. of inclusive wealth in accounting prices. And I was just trying to understand from your sort of analysis here, am I right in thinking that you're sort of parking issues of externalities for the moment in your discussion? So you have your sort of discussion about exchange values and welfare values, but so one of the issues that we sort of came across when trying to combine the work that's going on with the environmental literature, with, you know, the national accounts estimates, which you were just talking about, you know, people typically take the national accounts estimates and the new SNA will be using the term exchange prices for what the national accounts is using, they'll take those as exchange prices. And then the ecosystem accounts use exchange equivalents. So if there were a market in this area, what are the sort of prices that you would achieve? And the issue that we came up against was some of those prices are being caught in existing capitals. So the prices of buildings of households will sometimes capture the value of them being close to green areas that because there's no market for those green areas, those are being caught in the household. So if you were to add the price of the house to a market equivalent of the green space, you'd end up double counting the value. Are you parking that issue in the sort of work that you've done or do you, do you have some ways of thinking about that as well?
Yeah, easy one to start. I think there's a couple, so a couple of responses. One is that the paper doesn't tackle that question in a sense, it's really focusing on a singular asset in a way and thinking about the change in wealth there. So in that sense, I can park it away. But I do think on the question of externalities, that's sort of related to the issue that Paul, Paul's been raising as well, because you can sort of start to think it through for a single asset, but it's not, and I think to Paul's point, it's not necessarily purely a question of, a scope question of, of adding on, sort of, which works for positive externalities, it's not as clear for negative externalities if you're having impacts on other people as a result of, of, of different activities. So yeah, we probably need, that had, I wouldn't say parked, it was just not the focus of the paper. So in a sense, we didn't deliberately say, oh, no, we're just sort of there. But to your other, your sort of broader point about how asset values are captured in other things or maybe reflected in other places in non-market things, I honestly think this is a, this is a massive question. And in the space of ecosystem accounting, it really comes out in land values, one of Erwin's favorite topics, so you might wanna go into this one. And neither the ecosystem accounting or SNA to that matter, I think really clearly identifies this question of what, what is in a land value? What, what non-market benefits are sitting within a land value that you observe on the market? So then SNA gets around it in a way by saying, just take the market value. And that's great, but if you've then actually trying to integrate it with ecosystem accounting, ecosystem accounting can stand by itself, but if you're trying to bring the two together in a, in a balance sheet, a broader balance sheet context, you do run into these problems. I, my sense is in theory hedonics should solve all of this, at least, you know, that you're identifying these different characteristics and that you might get within a, within a land value at any particular point in time. But yeah, processes for identifying what those characteristics are and what those prices are and what the full scope of benefits might be, given that many of them are public and not private. Because I think the hedonics in actual, you probably reveal the private benefits that are unpriced, a, a house with amenity value or air filtration services or, or those types of things. But whether or not you would capture the price of the carbon sequestration from trees that are on your property seems highly unlikely to me in that market price. But I, you know, that's, yeah. For me, it's one of the big areas of discussion in, in this space. So I've had to understand land values and what's really in them from a non-market perspective.
I own a five acre farm. I've planted hundreds of trees. I'm green as heck.
Next question, comment?
Actually, on hedonics, there is a problem with land and that is that usually land sells matched up with some structure on it. And so then to get the land value, you have to have a decomposition of the property value into components and you do use hedonics and then you could extend hedonics more finely. You know, your, your, your guesstimate that hedonics would solve a lot of these problems, I think is right.
I can throw in something which I think might affect this, this one as well, is that in the SNA currently, but of increasing interest is actually activity which is undertaken to improve land. So there is a notion of land improvements, which there, which clearly is treated as capital formation. So it's part of your eye, but then it's increasing the value of the land, which is, and, and how that interplay has always been a bit of a problem in the SNA. But then it's expanding out now in terms of ecosystem restoration activity. So there's actual expenditures which are off, basically treated as intermediate costs largely, but which are leading to increases in asset value to the extent that you'll recognize an increase in perhaps non-market services which are arising. So it's, there's a, there starts to become an interesting interplay across the accounts in how we're looking, not just the asset value itself, but also the, how we account for changes in it.
So I wanted to bring something here into this land discussion and, because, because the stock can shrink, for instance. When they're being flat, specifically in Brisbane and in Queensland and also in New South Wales, the, so governments have made the decision to buy back and convert that into green spaces. This is an insurance issue, right? Because, because private insurance will never, it is impossible for an individual to buy insurance in the private market and therefore this falls into the taxpayer, on the taxpayers and so. But, but in reality, in that particular situation, you, I suppose you can think about the stock for housing is, might be shrinking, but then let's think about the ocean, you know, ocean, you know, so we could potentially lose the land, right? And so how do we, I mean, we don't even account for land in the, but, but the reality is that, 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 you know, in, you know, from an environmental point of view, we do, we will need to think about, if we ever think about land and putting it in the national accounts, we will need to consider all of these, you know, issues that will come in.
In principle, it is in the national accounts. I mean, it is in the current national accounts, you have land. The issue that you mentioned is of course a really important empirical one. And if you, well, A, I mean, you want land in terms of quantity and its valuation disaggregated by type of land. So agricultural land, residential land, zoning, because the price differences are huge and you, you know, you make a volume index of land and if the zoning restrictions change, your land volume index goes up or down, even though sort of physically that doesn't make all that much, much sense, but it could happen. And if there is a true physical change to land through, you know, I don't know, the sea level rises and I mean, that in principle can be taken care of in the, in the balance sheet as well. And, and then of course, land is also a factor of production as Erwin often underlines, typically neglected in productivity measurement and elsewhere, even though, you know, it's, it's right there and it's a big ticket liable to influencing our measures of inputs into production if you bring inland in addition to produced capital or other natural, other natural capital. So, but it's a, it's a very important, a very important point. And then, sorry, just to round this up, and as Carl says, the SNA already now treats land improvement as an act, act of production, so as an act of investment. So in a way, there is some, some investment, of course, you want to bring in degradation as, as well. And because it's the, the equivalent to pumping oil out of the ground is having your land quality degrading.
So in a recent paper with Koji Nomura and Shihiru Shimizu, where we looked at changes in land values in, in China and the US, what you see is agricultural land shrinking and then commercial and residential land expanding. And so we did try to estimate that effect in, in the investment accounts. Again, changes in value. But, but the zoning thing is terribly important as well. As soon as you rezone agricultural land into commercial or residential, I mean, you get this, this big boost, well, which does affect the aggregates in the end. And then the buying up, you know, properties that are liable to be flooded, yeah, that, that affects insurance rates too. So complicated.
Well, I mean, yeah, do, I mean, what is the public and the private aspect of insurance in this problem, right?
Yeah, like who benefits, I mean, the taxpayers are indirectly paying the extra premium to bail these people out of the risk. Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking about this private-public interaction because even if private households and firms have insurance, there is also some public insurance for infrastructure provided by the government. So the households don't buy insurance over whether the road outside their property is going to survive flooding and earthquake, et cetera. But sometimes government's gonna crowd out the private insurers. And one situation we're aware of in New Zealand, for decades, the government collected a levy into an earthquake recovery fund. And when they had the massive earthquake, which devastated the center of my hometown, Christchurch in 2011, the government had billions of dollars on hand to help communities recover. So there is a government, there can be cases where the government kind of crowds things out. And, and how, how does it all fit in with your model when you've got the government as a player in the insurance industry already implicitly collecting premiums from households and, and businesses? Is that money being captured in the national accounts or does it only appear once there are outgoings and they're, they start rebuilding the roads, the electric, electricity networks, et cetera?
I think it's the latter. I mean, you record if there's a payment going into the government, whether it's a levy or whether it's general tax revenue or whatever source of funding they're using in order to cover the cost of some catastrophe down the line, then I think, yeah, that's, all of those transactions are recorded, both the money coming in and money going out. I think the, the interesting one is this question of the utility benefits, how much does society benefit from that, not just from the private insurance market, but I mean, you could start to imagine government then as a self-insurer in the same way as someone who, and I'm reminded now of a comment you made just before lunch about this asset of money that, you know, a, a stock of, a reserve of money that you have in the bank, which enables you in a sense to become a self-insurer. But so now my mind's sort of spinning a bit because I'm starting to think, and the, the other presentation that someone from the ONS, I can't remember his name, Kevin maybe, was talking about work on the measuring public sector output. And he was talking about things that preventative sort of approaches of police force or defense force, you could readily imagine them as a form of insurance. Against what is, you know, an interesting question. But it does suggest that there's, I mean, the proportion of what we spend, which is essentially an insurance, you could argue that eating food is an expenditure against death, you know, it's sort of insurance. So yeah, I, I'm just saying, but you start to, obviously I'm spitting too fast now. But I think there is something to play out in this space about how that all comes together.
Can I just sort of add one? No, 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 no. Just add one point. I mean, you, you made the right observation that this case could be interpreted as government sort of being its own insurer. But of course, the big benefit for the private household is the pooling of the risk. Okay, it's precisely, you, you know, you don't, you, you're not your own insurer. You are, you're paying a premium to hedge the risk basically, and if it happens, well, then you get, so, so I think there's a, there's a qualitative difference. And if we think about the, the utility from insurance, then, I mean, this, this pooling aspect or spreading, sharing the risk is something that would need to come through somehow, you know, the insurance company provides a risk assumption service in a way to the, to the, to the household that I, I don't think we're, we're capturing currently.
The government should tax people living in floodplains a little extra, you know, to cover the implicit insurance cost, right?
Are you running for office on that platform, Erwin? I, I don't think you're gonna get very far.
I think we have about one more minute in case anybody else has a pressing question or comment. Okay. So if we don't, I would like for all of you to join me thanking our three speakers, two speakers and discussant, more precisely. And this has been very enlightening and there is so much to be, to be thought about in this area clearly. And thank you so much for your great thoughts and papers. Thank you.